The gummies are weird.
They're just gummy snacks. Not that kind.
A little skull and crossbow in there. No, I don't know what the hell.
Oh, they're yummy. They're fruit snacks. I'm addicted to them. Hope they don't have me in marriage, do I?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Zephyr Hills, Florida on Monday, May 13th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. Ms. Hillman, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Monson.
Here.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steve Spina.
Here.
Matthew Maggert.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
All right, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. We have a couple of nice things coming up here in just a couple of minutes, but I will want to ask you right now if you could all silence your cell phones. We will have citizens' comments at the end of the engendio. You'll have three minutes to speak on any item you want to speak on, so if you haven't already signed up and you want to speak, you want to sign up with Ms. Hillman. At this time, we're going to have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Mr. Andres Sakara, Director of Mission and Ministry at Advent Health, to do our invocation for us.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as your word exhorts us in the Apostle Paul's words, I urge then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. Lord, grant the members of this city council the humility to recognize that they serve not for personal gain but for the well-being of this community. May they exemplify the spirit of servant leadership in all they do. In spite of ever-present uncertainties and dangers, we beseech you, O God, to protect our city's leaders from harm, both physical and spiritual. May they be shielded from harm as they carry out their duties. Lord, we pray for unity among our local and national government leaders, that they may work together harmoniously for the common good. Let divisive agendas be set aside in favor of cooperation and collaboration. May our leaders possess compassionate hearts, empathizing with the struggles and challenges faced by their citizens. Lord, soften hearts to the needs of the marginalized and vulnerable. Lord, we implore you to guide our leaders in upholding justice and fairness in their policies and decisions. Let righteousness prevail over injustice and inequality. Amidst health crises, we ask for your divine wisdom in guiding our leaders to provide accessible and effective healthcare solutions for our citizens, ensuring the well-being of all. We thank you, Lord, for allowing a community-facing institution such as our local hospital to work for the benefit of all we serve, and ask humbly that your blessing will continue to see us forward. These things we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and again, I'd like to welcome everybody. We're going to go right into the fun part of the meeting, with the mayor has a lot of exciting proclamations for us tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to the mayor at this time.
Thank you. We usually do not have this many proclamations, but we're quite excited that we do tonight, that we're going to be honoring some amazing people. So I'm going to have you guys come up one by one. We're going to start with Advent Health coming up for Hospital Week proclamation, and I'm going to be reading a lot, so give me some grace if I flub up tonight, okay? Let's come right back here, okay? And I think we've got it. Thank you, guys, for being here and representing the healthcare industry in our community. Whereas, the Advent Health Zephyr Hills team consisting of more than 1,000 physicians, nurses, and staff delivers unparalleled, consistent healthcare, which includes clinical expertise in cardiology, emergency care, surgical services, obstetrics, neurosurgery, stroke care, rehabilitation, imaging, laboratory wound care, diabetes, and women's services. And whereas, Advent Health Zephyr Hills has been a steadfast pillar of healthcare excellence in our community for nearly 40 years, providing compassionate care, innovative treatments, and unwavering support to individuals and families in our community. And whereas, Advent Health Zephyr Hills has been recognized with an A hospital safety grade from the Leapfrog Group, a national nonprofit watchdog that sets standard for excellence in patient care. And whereas, Advent Health Zephyr Hills has been recognized for being in the top 5% of hospitals nationwide for clinical excellence by health grades for four years in a row. And whereas, Advent Health Zephyr Hills has earned the Top Workplace USA Award for two years in a row, demonstrating an ongoing commitment to growing a diverse workforce and inclusive work environment. And whereas, Hospital Week provides an annual opportunity for individuals and communities to express gratitude, appreciation, and support for healthcare professionals, recognizing their tireless efforts and profound impacts in the lives of others. And now therefore I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through 13th, 2024, as Hospital Week in Zephyr Hills, and ask all residents to join in honoring the healthcare heroes who care for our community every day. We'll get a good picture.
Congrats.
I can leave this over here, probably, right? Okay. All right, here we go. Next, I'd like Public Works to come on up. Our Public Works Department.
Hey, Bobby.
All right. Where are we going to go? Whereas, public work professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Zephyr Hills. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Zephyr Hills to gain knowledge and to maintain an ongoing interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, this year's theme, Advancing Quality of Life for All, marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week in tribute to all Public Works employees, who create a foundation of a stronger, more livable community. Resolved, I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and I urge all our citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the City of Zephyr Hills Department of Public Works in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. Thank you, guys, for all you do. Oh, there you go.
Snuggle up, boys.
Appreciate you guys.
Shane's got to take them out.
Next, okay, we're going to have Luann Gore come on up.
Yeah. He's supposed to, isn't he?
It's an exciting day when we have great teachers who have served our community so well, to be able to come here and honor them. So today, I'm really excited about that. So here you go. I'm going to try to breathe this time. Whereas, the Zephyr Hills High School Chorus is the oldest chorus elective authored in CHS, established in 1910, and is the oldest continuous choral program in Pasco County. And whereas, Luann Gore, a fifth-generation Zephyr Hillsian. Zephyr Hillian. Graduate of Zephyr Hills High School, class of '77, and lifelong community resident, served as choral director at her alma mater for 17 years. And whereas, as choral instructor, she learned her musical craft at the feet of such teaching legends as artist Parsons and John T. V. Clark, her musically-inclined mother Louise, and her co-educator Russell Schmidt, enabling her to share her teaching accomplishments to generations of Zephyr Hills students. And whereas, Ms. Gore began her teaching career at Woodland and West elementary schools, also taught at Raymond B. Stewart Middle School. She is a graduate of the Florida State University, and prior to her teaching career was a print and radio and television journalist in San Francisco, California, and in Tampa and St. Petersburg. She also worked as a reporter for WPAS, a local radio affiliate in Zephyr Hills. Whereas, Ms. Gore used her skills to raise $20,000 through choral concerts to assist homeless students in the Zephyr Hills community, who were assisted by the ABC program and participated in Founder's Day parades, once flashmobbing the judges' table, and master of ceremonies with a rendition of "The Time Warp" and participating in other community events. I was in that "Time Warp." Yeah. My moves, no. His moves, great, not mine. But that's okay, I tried. Whereas, the longtime choral director will retire this academic year, passing the torch to a new director and students after a decade and a half of educational and musical career. Now therefore I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, along with the members of the city council and fellow residents of the community, proclaim May 13th, 2024, as a day of honor to appreciate Ms. Luann Gore and recognize her recognition of her many contributions to the city of Zephyr Hills. Mr. Schmidt, your family's here. Yeah, go Papa! Yes. Are you excited to be here or what? I can tell. Whereas, the Zephyr Hills High School Band is a cherished part of the Zephyr Hills community, a popular feature of community parades and events. And whereas, Russell Schmidt has been a musical fixture in Pasco County schools for 39 years, including serving as band director at Raymond B. Stewart Middle School for five years, Pasco High School for four years, and Zephyr Hills High School for 27 years. Whereas, Mr. Schmidt brought an untold level of excellence and professionalism to high school music, receiving nearly 45 superior ratings in state competitions, including three MPA performances. He participated in 25 appearances at the Lakeside Jazz Festival in Port Orange, Florida, a statewide venue of preeminent jazz competitions. Further, Mr. Schmidt worked to bring back Pasco all-county and chorus programs, underscoring his commitment to nurturing musical talent among students and enriching the cultural landscape of Pasco County. And whereas, Mr. Schmidt is a graduate of Southwest Texas State University, now Texas State University, and Dupa University, he and his wife Donna Lee, Donna Lee, love it, have three sons and five grandchildren. As a local band teacher, Mr. Schmidt has participated in 100 local parades and countless community events with both the full band and jazz band students. And whereas, the longtime band director will retire this academic year, passing the torch to a new director and students after a 39-year educational and musical career in Pasco County, and includes three years teaching in Texas. Now therefore I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, along with members of the city council and fellow residents of the community, proclaim May 13th, 2024, as a day to honor and appreciation to Mr. Russell Schmidt in recognition of his many contributions to the city of Zephyr Hills and Pasco County. Okay. Ms. Johns. Whereas, Zephyr Hills High School recognizes the contributions of its instructors for their contributions to the educational system and preparing students for future success. And whereas, the School of Pasco County School District annually recognizes an outstanding instructor with special distinction. And whereas, Leanne John, an agricultural science and veterinary assisting teacher at CHS, was named 2024 Teacher of the Year by both Zephyr Hills High School and Pasco County School District, a singular acknowledgement of her teaching prowess and ability to connect with her students. And whereas, yes, and whereas, Ms. John is herself a product of the Pasco County school system and a graduate of the University of South Florida, and previously taught at West Zephyr Hills Elementary School, where she was named Teacher of the Year. Whereas, her professional focus has been to promote the sciences and agricultural field in addition to serving as 4-H leader and Pasco County Fair Association president. Now therefore I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, along with members of the city council and fellow residents of the community, proclaim May 13th, 2024, as a day to honor Ms. Leanne John in recognition, act men, and contributions to the students of the city of Zephyr Hills and Pasco County. Congratulations. So we're pretty lucky, aren't we? Look at that. Thank you for bearing with me.
Mayor, before you move on, I just wanted to, I had the opportunity to work with all three of our honorees for a long time when I was at the high school, and I seen the dedication and impact they had on our students, and it's well-deserved. Now, Leanne's going to be still with us, but I went to school with Luann Gore. Russell was my daughter's soccer coach way back when. You know, it's just an honor to work with you guys, and I really want to congratulate and thank you again for what you're doing. I know Leanne's going to be still with us, so that's good. And she was my next-door neighbor classroom when I was at the school. Thank you all for what you've done. And I'm going to give the families an opportunity to get out the door before the next exciting thing happens.
I will tell you that Ms. Gore and Mr. Schmidt had an incredible impact on my children. Both of them were, one was in band, the other was in chorus, and they had a great time.
Yeah, they're going to be missed up there, that's for sure.
They are, they are.
Their teaching, but also what they brought to the community. They were in parades, they were at festivals, they were at all kinds of events, they brought their students with them, and it's been a pleasure to work with them over the years.
Agreed.
As another.
Last thing is, we have Pasco County students working against tobacco. The SWAT presentation by Wendell Crin Technical High School. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Kirchner. I am the SWAT advisor, students working against tobacco at Wendell Crin Technical High School in Pasco County. And I brought a student, Kaylee, with me here today, who's going to do a presentation for you guys. We're here to discuss the benefits of an ordinance creating tobacco-free parks in the city of Zephyr Hills. This ordinance would protect both kids and adults from exposure to secondhand smoke. It would help demoralize tobacco use, which is the leading cause of death and disease in the United States. So I would like to introduce you to Kaylee, one of my students. Okay. Every person in the city of Zephyr Hills can, oh, yeah, okay. Every person in the city of Zephyr Hills can enjoy the great outdoors free from toxic smoke and litter. Two-thirds, or approximately 64%, of youth in Pasco County are exposed to secondhand smoke.
Hold on just one second, see if she have the...
I tilted up a little bit, yeah, we can hear you.
You can just scoot a little closer to the microphone. You don't have to be shy. Everybody here supports you.
Yes, absolutely.
Know that as you're talking.
Absolutely.
Two-thirds, or approximately 64%, of youth in Pasco County are exposed to secondhand smoke. Cigarettes are also the most littered item. U.S. Poison Control Centers reported 9,500-plus cases involving children under, whichever one I was on, exposed to tobacco products in 2020. There are no safe levels of exposure to secondhand smoke. Children exposed to secondhand smoke have increased risk of sudden-infant death syndrome, asthma, and cancer. Both cigarette and electronic vapor products contain nicotine, lead, and formaldehyde. Tobacco-free spaces reduce secondhand smoke exposure, reduce tobacco use, and denormalize tobacco use. Tobacco products are toxic for the planet. Lead, arsenic, and other chemicals in cigarettes and vape products cause pollution. Cigarette filters and electronic vapor products are not biodegradable. The tobacco industry cuts down 600 million trees every year. Literally hurts tourism. Pristine natural areas are core to Florida's economic health. In July 2020, the Florida Clean Air Act was updated. Counties and, I forgot how to say that word, we literally just went over it, municipalities can now restrict smoking and vaping in public parks and beaches. Unfiltered cigars are excluded from the regulation. The Public Health Law Center created a model ordinance for Florida counties and municipalities that would prohibit smoking and vaping on public parks and beaches, require signage, and then allow for enforcement. Protecting kids today can improve public health for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
And thank you. I have a quick question. I understand that cigars are excluded from this as the only, the only thing? Unfiltered, okay. I, for one, when they had the Indoor Smoking Act, I loved it when they did that. When they did it at the stadiums, when you couldn't smoke, I mean, this is great. Now, we're attacking other areas of public space that people congregate, so I think it's really, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Part of the presentation tonight was because we had a meeting, and Hernando County had passed an ordinance banning smoking in their city parks, and so it was brought to my attention. What's that? Oh, and the beaches too, you're right. And so, in the very near future, unless council says no, there will be an ordinance presented to you to ban smoking in the parks in Zephyr Hills.
Wonderful.
I would look at other spaces of public congregation too, instead of just saying just parks, you know, so that we can...
Well, there's so many people who are allergic to cigarette smoke, you know, and I have a grandson that's almost four, and if he's around it, then he is deathly ill, and it's just scary to see that. And so if we take him to a park and he cannot go on a playground because there's somebody around there, it really makes me sad. So thank you for bringing that to us, and we'll definitely work on that. Thank you.
And I have a question about this ordinance. Would it have a provision, I guess, on what to do if somebody is smoking, what another citizen could do, or...
We'll work through all that. Yeah, we haven't, I know an example was sent to us from Hernando, so we'll... Thank you for making the trip, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we are, and you're all done, Mayor, so that was, that was a long, one of your better nights, right? All right, moving on to the consent items, we have seven consent agenda items, and it's a council's pleasure on those.
I move to approve the consent agenda presented.
A motion to second to approve all seven consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, moving on to business items, Finance Director's Report, Presentation of the 2023 Audit and Financial Report.
Yes, included in your packet is a copy of our audit for this year. Mary Fernandez with DG Perry is here to go ahead and present the audit report and talk about their process. With that, I'll introduce Mary. Mary Fernandez.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Mary Fernandez with DG Perry, CPAs and Advisors, right here in Zephyr Hills, Florida. So I was actually the audit manager for this year's 2023 audit. Kind of go into, you can read kind of what's on the slide as far as our responsibilities for the audit, that's looking over the financials in their entirety. So that would mean the government-wide financials, as well as the fund financials, in accordance with GAS, or generally accepted auditing standards, or also government auditing standards as well. And then also looking at controls over compliance that relates to those financial statements, as well as looking at the major funds. And then, of course, helping with the financial statement preparation itself. So as far as your responsibilities, as far as the city's responsibilities, big one, because of course the city likes to be transparent, I mean, that's what a government, one of its primary focuses is to be transparent, is of course oversight of those financials and preparation of them, including the note disclosures as well in the back of their report. As far as maintaining, you know, controls over the financials, designating someone with skills, knowledge, and expertise to look over the non-attest services, which includes, you know, preparation of the financials and the disclosure. So that would be assigning someone like Ted as the Finance Director and Jessica to look over those financials. So we're required as auditors for certain communications with governance at the conclusion of the audit. Typically, these are found in a letter, a post-communication governance, with governance letter, but we kind of would bring those to your attention for the presentation itself, just to give kind of that qualitative aspect to the audit versus, hey, here's your numbers. Because you can look at numbers all day long, but what do they mean, what's behind them? So as far as like the first one says, you know, significant policies, if you look at the audit itself, because we always say you should look at the financials as well as the notes together, you can't look at them separate and like, well, what do these numbers mean, where are they coming from? So the note disclosures near the, kind of the back, sort of like midway through the report, are very important to look at in conjunction with your financials. So note one, that's gonna be your significant accounting policies that govern the financials and the preparation of them themselves. Some of the significant estimates for the financials include your like OPEB or your post-employment, you know, benefit, benefits, remaining useful lives of the fixed assets, you know, capital improvements, the streets, those sort of things. New this year is you're gonna see, if you actually read like through the financials, like the notes, is gonna be GASB 87, that deals with leases. That was very important and related to the city because of the airport leases, so like the airport hangars. Those are commitment, a multi, like a multi-year commitment for the city. So that had to be disclosed this year. And then, GASB 96, that deals, like it says, there were subscription-based information technology arrangements. So the city has a multi-year commitment, committed contract for communication software. So that had to be included in the financials this year as well. As far as difficulties, we didn't have any difficulties, Ted's wonderful. So we didn't have any there, especially with governance, you know, going through our communications, so nothing there. As far as consultations, we aren't aware of any that the city has made. And then as far as, of course, uncorrected or corrected misstatements, if there were any, they were minor, and they were corrected as part of the audit. So a little bit more about our required communications. Again, there were no disagreements with management or with council or anything like that as far as the report. And then, of course, internal control matters that we're required to look at, there were no instances of non-compliance that we are aware of. So diving a little bit into the financials themselves now, as far as the opinion, because that's what you want, mostly want to look for in the audit itself, it was an unmodified or a clean opinion is what, that's what you're looking for. So another, kudos to Ted and Jessica and the city overall for having a clean opinion on the financials. As far as internal control, there were no instances of non-compliance reported. And then as far as a single audit, that deals with like your state and like your federal grants, like as far as compliance and internal control over compliance with those grants and major programs, an unmodified or clean opinion on those as well. So we want to include some of the financial statements in this presentation, you have them in the report, but kind of just want to bring across like some of the major financial statements that we were looking at. So the first one is the balance sheet, so that's gonna be your governmental funds. It's not necessarily like government-wide versus like proprietary, so this one, of course, is just governmental funds broken out. So you're gonna, like it says there, your special rev, your CRA, your impact fee, of course, and the general itself. So overall, the city had roughly 41, not quite 42 million in total assets for the year. Total liabilities was just shy of 2 million at 1.7, almost 1.8 million for total, total funds for the year. And then fund balance, that's gonna be broken out by like designation or it's undesignated, kind of like it says there, whether, you know, it's restricted or if council says this is how we want to spend this money. That's kind of how this is broken out, that's why you'll see like multiple categories there. So overall, just shy of 40 million at the end of 2023. And of course, undesignated, there was just shy of 8 million at 7.9. So this here is gonna be your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, so kind of like, like almost like a profit and loss statement for like a for-profit. But for government, total revenues were, for all the funds, this is talking about your governmental funds, was a little over 30 million, 30.2, not quite 30.3 million total for the year for total revenue. And then you look at your expenditure section, you're gonna have 21.7 million for that, and then, like I said, just shy of 22 mil for that, which gives you total excess of revenues over expenditures of 8.5 million for the year. And then, of course, your ending fund balance, that refers back to the one, the slide before, is just shy of 40 million for fund, total fund balances at the end of the year. Now diving into your proprietary funds, again, it's gonna be like your airport, you know, your sanitation, utility funds, just over 18 million, not quite 18 and a half million in total revenues for the year. And then your total operating was 15 and a half, about 15 and a half million for the year for those, which gave you operating income overall for proprietary funds of 2.9, just shy of 3 million for the year. And then you have what's called non-operating, that there was 3.6 million, less a little bit over 3.6 million for the year for total non-operating expenses or revenues. And then you have the bottom section, like it says there, income before capital contributions and transfers. Overall, there, like you have, it says transfers from other funds, if there were any contributions from customer, you might be like, well, that's a huge number. Well, there's a lot of development in the year in the city, as far as, you know, you have the apartments like down by Publix, you have other communities and developments going in, so that's kind of where that number kind of is coming from, and then, of course, capital grants. So overall, the proprietary funds change in net assets was roughly 14 million for the year. So usually, we give a year-to-year, like five-year comparison, so that's kind of what this is, we still include it in the presentation, because we know people like seeing those trends, you know, like how did it, you know, increase or decrease throughout the years, just kind of a little snapshot of that. So it did increase overall from 2022 to 2023 as far as overall governmental funds revenue. And it kind of has been slowly increasing year after year, I mean, from 2019 on, so 30 million from '27, so you're looking about 2 million, a little over 2 million roughly in revenue for the overall governmental funds for the year, and it's broken down there by category. So the next slide, this is gonna be your overall governmental expenses or expenditures. Again, you're gonna see kind of that five-year trend of kind of what's happening for the overall, you're like, well, you know, the financials just give that one-year kind of snapshot, management's discussion analysis kind of gives a two-year comparison, but again, like giving that five-year, just to kind of see the fluctuations, fluctuations year to year. So as you can see there, overall governmental fund expenditures did increase from 2022 around not quite 19 million to just shy of 22 mil for 2023. So this year is the general fund, undesignedated or unreserved fund balance, again, another five-year comparison, so you can see from 2022 to 2023, it jumped quite significantly, where overall it was kind of steady, it was increasing, and then it jumped, and then it jumped, increased quite a bit from 2022 to 2023, at almost just shy of $8 million for the year. So the next slide here, this is gonna be those, again, proprietary funds, but this is the expenses side of it. Again, it was kind of staying steady for the most part over the last five years, it did increase year after year, but overall, it did bump up from 22 to 23 at just shy of 16 million for the, at the end of 2023 for those proprietaries, like your airport and sanitation and utility funds. And then the last slide here, this is the net assets by activity type. So that is going to be, like it says there, your governmental activities is the blue line, orange is business type. And then as far as the business type themselves, which is that orange line, that was again, approximately 97 million. And then your government is gonna be 49 and a half million, so just shy of 50 million at the end of the year. That's where I'll add.
So to reference the last slide, the business type is utility, sanitation, airport.
Correct.
Kind of, you pay for what you're getting kind of thing.
Exactly, proprietary, right.
Right, and then the governmental is the general fund, generally speaking.
Exactly, right, CRA, so that's gonna basically be kind of like those, like maybe third, fourth slide where I was going into it, right, it's got the governmental funds, exactly. So even though it's like business type, well, that wasn't really used before, right, that's your proprietary funds, exactly.
So this year with the, we're ending the, we're ending last year with a little over $8 million in excess funds, I guess.
Exactly. Right, at 7.9, right, that's kind of like a cushion, right, for kind of like what's to come, you can't really see that, but that 8 million kind of gives a cushion for the unforeseen or the unexpected, exactly.
I have one question, if I may, about the airport. The airport, it says operating revenues increased by 20% and expenses increased by 18%. So that's a good percent, I mean, we're doing that right, we're ahead of the game there in terms of revenues and expenses. But the depreciation always kind of makes the airport look like it's not self-sufficient when it is. Can, I don't understand that, I know what depreciation is, but it's hard to, for me, to figure how it balanced, it's kind of a paper number. Okay, not an actual number.
Yeah, I mean, right, because depreciation, right, you're not gonna see it, but you think of erosion, right, like a beach erosion, like you have a sidewalk, right, and it's brand-new, and it's crispy, you know, it's crisp, and it's perfect, when it's, hey, it just got laid, right? So year after year, the sea salt and everything's gonna chip away right at that, at that sidewalk. Think of that like depreciation, like even though, right, you can't really see it, it does, right, accumulate over time, so, right, it's kind of a paper figure, but yes, it is getting wear and tear on those assets, absolutely.
On the runway or...
On the runway, right. You have a lot of projects at the airport, so you're gonna see that number probably gradually increase because of all the, you know, taxiways that's being extended and worked on and things of that nature, absolutely. Mm-hmm, for sure.
This is a great...
Yeah, it's eye-opening, and the thing is, is that, you know, one of the things I wanted to ask is, you mentioned the airport, a lot of that grant money coming in that we see in the front page and the expenses we see on that page, that's sort of coming in and going out, coming in and going out, sort of, right? And then, the other thing you mentioned was the assets and deterioration assets, so metal buildings typically will depreciate at a higher rate perhaps than our new FBO, for example, right?
Possibly, and that's up to you guys to come up with useful lives, but absolutely, I mean, yeah, right, and you think about it, like...
Yeah, based on my experience, that's been the case, that the metal buildings sometimes are depreciated at a faster rate, whatever the tax benefit is for the business owner, and I don't know how that works for municipal projects.
Can I ask a question? And that brings up a good question, what is the useful life on, how do we determine that?
Life?
On an asset, say this building?
Mm-hmm, kind of like useful life. I mean, there is a standard, kind of, you know, hey, there's other governments, it's not just the city of Zephyr Hills. So, you know, the, like, kind of what the, and there are guides out there as far as like governmental accounting to say, hey, what is an average good useful life for a building like this, you know, so there are guides and manuals out there as far as like the standards goes, it says, hey, this is what a good number, approximate number would, reasonable number would be for like a building of this size, right?
And that goes back to your general accepted accounting principles, basically, I mean, that's, that's an accepted accounting principle, use these guides to determine how much each asset's worth, and it's wearing down a little bit each year, something, but, but it is a non-cash expenditure that depreciation is.
Exactly.
So it's, you know, I, I always think that's good, when I'm doing it, if I can, because I'm paying taxes, if you get greater depreciation, accelerated depreciation upfront to offset income, but, but for us, it's different, I know.
Well, no, absolutely, right, those guides, because we look at it, you know, as part of the audit, or, you know, Ted, because Ted's like, let's say, keeping, and there's a city overall is maintaining its own asset schedule, you know, then we...
Can I ask a question? And that brings up a good question. What, what is the useful life on, how do we determine that?
Life?
On an asset, say this building?
Mm-hmm, kind of like useful life. I mean, there is a standard kind of, you know, hey, there's other governments, and it's not just the city's Everhills. So, you know, the, like, kind of what the, and there are guides out there as far as like governmental accounting to say, hey, what is an average good useful life for a building like this, you know? So there are guides and manuals out there as far as like the standards goes. It says, hey, this is what a, a good number, approximate number would, reasonable number would be for like a building of this size.
And that goes back to your general accepted accounting principles, basically. I mean, that's, that's an accepted accounting principle, use these guides to determine how much each asset's worth. And it's wearing down a little bit each year, something, but, but it is a non-cash expenditure that depreciation is. So it's, you know, I, I always think that's good, when I'm doing it, if I can, because I'm paying taxes, if you get greater depreciation, accelerated depreciation upfront to offset income, but, but for, for us, it's different, I know.
But no, absolutely, right, those guides, because we look at it, you know, as part of the audit or, you know, Ted, because Ted's like, let's say, keeping it, or the city overall is maintaining its own asset schedule, you know, then we kind of look at those numbers, like the useful lives, and say, does it look reasonable based on our industry knowledge, you know? And, and the guides, what they say is like, hmm, yeah, that looks right, or hmm, you might want to reconsider what you got there, but absolutely.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Do we vote to accept the audit? I move that we accept the audit for twenty twenty-three.
A second.
A motion second to accept the audit as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. And I think it also says that Ted and Jessica aren't allowed to retire anytime soon. Sounds like, sounds like they're keeping things together.
Very nice presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
And you can tell I like Ted, right?
Mr. Wonderful.
It's charming.
Hey, business item three point two, is this city manager presenting this, or is this three point two?
This is finance director.
Okay, Ted, again.
Ted Beeson, finance director for the city. I've come before you to ask permission to staff up. Our history is such is that we are taking utility billing in-house. It had been outs, outhoused, or not outhoused, uh-
Outsourced.
It had been outsourced.
Outhouse.
Maybe a Freudian.
Already gotten, already.
It had been outsourced for a number of years, and we're taking it in-house now. And we had projected it would take much longer. We had been on a ten-month conversion process to say that Muni billing would be billings for the rest of this fiscal year, and then we would transfer over to Tyler. But we've gone through a process, ten months, we're ready to go live June seventeenth. And at that point, we think that our software is going to be in place, that we'll be able to bill everything correctly. We've been doing that parallel billing. We've been taking a look at, wow, what do we bill right now? What does our new software come up with? We see those match. We count records. We say that all the services convert, that everybody come over with the right balances. So Tyler has been doing a good job at making sure that we have all those parameters in place. We're ready to pull the trigger. When we budgeted, we only budgeted to say, let's keep our positions pretty much the way they are. We want to go ahead and have a billing position and another customer service representative position authorized by you. It would add total positions, about a hundred thousand dollars for salary and benefits. We want to disclose that to you, but we think that those two positions are going to be necessary. We looked at our volume, and we looked at the call volume at the call center in North Carolina. We want to go ahead and make sure we have the necessary staff so that it would be least painful for our ratepayers and that y'all wouldn't be getting too many calls and saying, what did the city staff do? We can't get through to them. So we, we think these are necessary things that we want to go ahead and staff up for. I'm going to be working with Billy, looking at how our staff is handling the new volume. And we're not going to go gung ho, but I think we've asked for reasonable things in those two additional staff. With that, I would just say, there are a lot of moving parts. Tyler Technologies is where we have our financial software right now, so our utility billing is going to be joining that, so to speak. Then we have our credit card processing, Paymentis. They seem to be up to the challenge to make this switch to. Then there's Water Smart or Vertec One, and that's where most of our customers click on, go to make their payment, leak alerts, or handle through Water Smart. So we think we have all those kind of operating well that they'll make the transition. City Works, which would be handling our, our work orders, that's going to be a little bit delayed, but we have a backup plan of just going ahead and using Tyler's work orders, which is not as good a system as what we have with City Works. We'll be making that transition later. At sixty thousand dollars a month, we're just going to plow forward, and the crew out in the field has agreed that we need to make the transition, but we'll catch up with City Works. So that's a little bit of a synopsis of what we've kind of pieced together. A lot of moving parts, a lot of sleepless nights in the way of thinking about, hey, what things can go wrong? We think the pain points for our customers are going to be very low, and that we've kind of covered most of that. With that, I'll open myself up for any questions that you might have.
Hey, I have a question. How many years has, have we been outsourcing the billing? Do we know offhand?
What was the question?
How many years have we been outsourcing billing? I mean, we went through like, what was it, Fathom?
Two thousand sixteen is when we went to Fathom.
So it was eight?
Sixteen, so eight years. And you look at the, the growth we've had just in the last eight years. I mean, I, I would assume that we would have seen the need for additional personnel anyways. For that, so I, I would think so anyways, because that's quite a bit of new customers in those eight years. Anyways, I'll let you guys, anybody have any questions or comments? And go ahead, Joe.
I had a meeting with Billy, I think it was Friday afternoon, and I totally agree. I, I'm so glad that we're bringing this back in-house. I wasn't really big on taking it out of house in the beginning, but I definitely agree that you are going to need some help. So you're thinking at least two employees?
We're asking for authorization for two additional employees.
That going to be enough to do what you got to do?
Yes, if not, you'll see us come back real quick. We, we think that that's going to be great. What's helping us in this whole process, if you remember, the number that sticks out in my mind is from Fathom to Muni billing, we had sixteen hundred customers that were auto-pay, that signed up to have their, drafted. We now stand at thirty-seven hundred customers that are going ahead and having auto-pay. So we find that fewer phone calls from those customers and things just kind of work smoothly.
Smoother.
Yeah. So we're able to stomach, stomach that a little bit better.
You still have the online o, o, option then too, if, if you pay online?
Correct, and that's, that's been a big part of it too, is to say that during the pandemic, big shift on people, rather than coming in and visiting us, they would pay online. And that, that stayed now. Once they've learned to do that, they call us if they need us, but otherwise they make those payments online. Well over sixty percent payments coming online.
That's a great number. And I'll tell you that the, like what Councilman Proctor was saying, as long as we have people in-house to resolve issues, so the new customer experience, the leaving, the exiting customer experience and all the little boo-boos in between, you know, the broken pipes and then this and then that, where we provide that face-to-face or personalized customer service. Everything else, if everything else is going right, and they're just clicking a button to pay their bill every month, that's got to be a win for us. I think that looks great.
Yes, it's that onboarding and offboarding customers that we want it to be more seamless, correct?
And Ted, I, just tell me if I've got this right, this, with Muni, we were paying sixty grand a month, right? So that'll, that'll be gone?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So in, in two months roughly, we'll pay for the two employees?
Correct, you've done math.
So, huh, and, and the other thing, and I know the department heads roll my eyes and stuff, but if we could look at, consider hybrid on something like this, because I'm, something like the back office type stuff is, is exactly what people want. And you might be able to get a really good person for less because they can stay at their house three days a week or something. Now, it might cause some problems with some people existing, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's where we're at today, you know? So, and I think we have to start thinking about it, so. But I, I think it's great to bring it back in because what you're telling me is right. The people that I have complaints with are the ones who are turning on or turning off, almost always.
Me too.
Why do I have to call North Carolina to get, and send all the stuff, you know? So that's, I think it's great.
Yeah, there's no doubt. We're going to have some learning pains, and there will be problems, and please bring those to Billy's attention.
As soon as we can. Play to Billy.
And I'm sure he will pass them on to me, but, but at least we're going to make our, we're going to make our mess maybe, and then we'll have a chance to clean up our own mess and get it right as quickly as possible.
So you're expecting a pretty clean transition, obviously, if there is a little hiccups here and there. For the, the citizen, we're not going to, you know, not going to hold their feet to the fire. We can, we're going to resolve the things, you know, kind of in-house and in a, in a way that it's not their fault, in other words, you know, something like that, so, okay. Anybody have anything? I guess we, do we need to action on this too?
Need approval, yeah, so we can add it into the employee schedule.
Mr. President, I move approval of this item.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion second to approve business item three point two, the additional position for utility billing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Ted, thank you, Jessica. City manager report.
Sir, item four point one, award of agreement number thirty-seven dash twenty-four dash zero five to CPH Consulting LLC for architectural and engineering services for the City Yard complex. The existing City Yard facilities were constructed in nineteen eighty-four. The facilities are antiquated and need more space and modernization. On April eighth of twenty-four, city council held a special meeting to consider proposals and rank each firm, firm for the design of the City Yard complex. Council approved staff to negotiate with CPH for a formal agreement. We met with representatives from CPH and finalized the attached agreement that you have in front of you. The agreement provides for space programming, as-built field verification, design, regular meetings with the C Mar, the construction manager at risk, and construction site observations during construction. One hundred percent plans and permits are expected to be completed by January of twenty twenty-five. Make sure I got that right. During the last budget cycle, we budgeted two million dollars in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Total cost of the agreement that's before you is one million nine hundred fifty dollars, eight hundred, sorry, one million nine hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars. These fees will be split sixty, thirty, ten between public works, utilities, and sanitation. With that, staff recommends approval of agreement number thirty-seven dash twenty-four dash zero five with CPH Consulting LLC. Any questions?
I have, I, I think at the last, at the meeting we had, when we approved them, there was some questions on the, on the, the total amount, actually. And I thought there was going to be some more discussion on that. Does anybody remember that? We didn't, didn't we say that, didn't we want to kind of discuss the, that number?
So does the number of the estimated cost of construction or the estimated, or the cost for-
Well, both, actually, but I mean-
So the, the estimated cost of construction is, is right close to twenty million. I know that's been brought down as part of the conversation, or part of the presentation. And then architectural fees are based on, I believe it's a state. Yeah, you can come up if you want. The slide, yeah.
Right, John Luntie with CPH. So the fees were based on, the base services were based on DMS fees with the state of Florida's Department of Management Services. And that covers basic services, which is schematic design through construction administration. This project, because of its unique needs and the scale of the investment, does require some additional support. That includes confirmation of your master plan for the site. It also has some concept design development that is additional services. In addition to that, what's also not included in the, in the DMS fee curve would be civil engineering, geotechnical investigation, the surveying. We also have landscape requirements and some other additional services that go beyond the DMS scope. The way we structured the fee essentially was taking a look at the estimated construction cost. As a city manager pointed out, that originally it was getting close to twenty million, and, and our goal is to get that closer to sixteen million through value engineering. But our, our fee, if I recall correctly, and I can follow up with, with those numbers more accurately, but the fee was based on the, using that base services for schematic design through construction administration. I think the DMS percentage was six point four percent for basic services. And then, which was in line with the, the original concept report that was prepared by your other consultant. Then to that was the additional services that, to, to come to that one point nine million dollars.
And, and I, part of the, when we, that I approved you guys, a lot of us felt like you were ready to go to work, and I think that's what we like to hear, is, you know, you're already thinking along the lines, and you're a significant reduction in from what we budgeted, which is unheard of for us for most part in most of the things we do. So I hope you continue on along them lines, because that's what we're looking for, so. And I'll turn it over to the council on anything.
Well, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that, all right, so the one fee is the one point nine million. But, you know, in the packet, they had fees, engineering from TLC for about seventy-two thousand, geotech for fourteen thousand, asbestos and environmental. So that's, that'll all be extra, and that's over a hundred thousand. That's not included in the one point nine, right?
No, no, that's part of the one point nine.
It is part of the one point nine?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The other question I had is, in the plans, we talk about option one and option two. When are we going to decide on, on that? Because that's, that'll configure into the cost of the project.
Certainly. So our, when, once we get the notice to proceed, our very first task will be to do the due diligence and then to meet with stakeholders to just confirm the, the program requirements and to make that decision to go forward. So that'll be one of the very first tasks.
Right, and then, as, as has been mentioned, the original, I guess, estimate for the project was about nineteen million. And in that presentation, your company showed that you could reduce it down to sixteen million. Are you still standing by that number then, or no?
That is our goal, correct.
So goal versus, I mean, I mean, I think that that number right there is what swayed a lot of-
Right.
The board to look at your company because you were looking creatively at, at cutting costs. So, you know, I would hate to have it come back and, and we're right back to nineteen million.
Right. What I can do is, we will be, you know, obviously, the decision rests with the city in terms of which direction you want to go and how you want to invest your money. And so, you know, we're committed to working with the city to realize that sixteen million. If we see decisions being made that we think are driving those costs up beyond that, we'll definitely make note of it and, you know, advise the stakeholders that let's, let's reevaluate this decision because we're concerned that we might be running, you know, above that cost. Also, once the C Mar is on board, they'll provide another level of verification. And we also, in our one point nine million service, also provide cost estimating so that we can, so that we can check the C Mar cost estimate. So the C Mar is saying, hey, this project is costing so much, we have a third-party cost estimate built in at the thirty and sixty percent phases to verify their costs. So collectively, that will be our team's goal, is to hit that sixteen million target.
I want to just continue on with what Councilman Spina said. It, it is the main reason that I personally voted for your company is because right off the bat, you were offering us major savings. And I would definitely, I would be very disappointed if, if all of a sudden it jacked right back up to where we were going to be in the beginning. So I'm just counting on you all to, to kind of stick to what you had told us in the beginning. And I understand there's costs involved, things go up, things go down. But to me, that was a major reason why I voted for your company.
If I, if I can-
Hopefully that we can stay there.
If I can interject real quick, I know part of the, the cost savings were, was, I'll say, value engineering that, that CPH saw during their, during their preparation for the presentation. So part of that savings is we, we have to agree to the value engineering to be able to get to that price. So if we don't agree with cutting out X square foot or X, X, Y, and Z, we're not going to get down to that number. So we just need to take that into account as well as we're considering what that cost of construction is.
And I appreciate you throwing that in. Right, also at that meeting, you, it was your recommendation, I mean, you've pointed out the value engineering and that the price was being brought down. So I think it's inherent to staff to make sure that that was your price and that you brought it forward. And I still think that bringing the actual price of a project during the negotiations with a consultant was not completely kosher, because we were, we were talking about their fee and, and their, their qualifications, not really the final project. But I think that will fall on staff's shoulders to get to that value engineering and maintain with the consultant to keep that price.
Right. Like I said, it's, we have to agree to the cuts to the value engineering to get it to that price.
That's what has to be recommended to us.
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things that we've already mentioned here, architecture is only part, or the architectural and engineering design is only part of it. The sooner we get the CM at risk on board- is only part of it, the sooner we get the CM at risk on board, that, those are real numbers. So, right now, the architects are projecting numbers from, from their experience, but, and, and these value engineering options. But the sooner we get, you know, a CM at risk on, on board, you know, then we're gonna get numbers that are closer to the market conditions, which I think are improving. Thing is, is that, you know, it'd be nice for us to be able to use someone that is familiar with our city, familiar with our challenges, with our staff, things like that. So, I don't know, you know, I just, I just don't want us to be in a situation where we've already gone way down the road selecting, you know, with no, no design input, no, no cost, no review of the costs, estimated costs, things like that. I just don't want us to jump, you know, thirty days from now into something, even though they're ready to get going, there's still a whole nother party here that's outside the mix. Because it's a three, it's kind of a three-legged stool. So, you have the architects and the engineers, you have the city, and then you have the CM, the manager at risk.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree with that. Our intent is, if this agreement is approved, we'll work with CPH to get the bid packet together for the C Mar and get that out on the streets.
When you say a bid packet, what you mean is a request for proposal?
Request for proposal, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, what I appreciated is you started off by looking at cost savings. And I would appreciate you to continue to look for cost savings every step of this way. Because to be honest with you, when you, y'all said twenty million, there was no way in, no way I would vote for. I mean, it's not, it's not that they don't deserve it, okay? That's not the case at all. But twenty million is the most we, the most by two times of any project we've had, you know? That's a lot of money. And my concern is, we gotta pay for it. So, I did have discussions this afternoon with the city manager about using our penny, some of the penny allocating it, possibly using some type of loan or bond towards it. And what, I mean, I would certainly be, look at that, but I want us to go five years, ten years, with some type of a capital improvement plan on large, on large expenditures, so we know what we have allocated out. It, does that make sense? I mean, in other words, if we looked at our hotspots map at any, at Zephyr Park, at this project, we put it all in a matrix or a spreadsheet, and we look and say, okay, we, we need, we think we're gonna allocate this project. We've ranked it, this is the one we know we're gonna spend. So, what it does is, it says, okay, we're looking at making choices now. We need the city yard, but we also need Zephyr Park, you know? So, we've got to balance the two. And it may be a, not as magnificent a city yard and not quite as magnificent as Zephyr Park. So, that's what we're, that's our task that we, the decisions we have to make. But I would ask that you, if, if you see it's running over, immediately come here and say, hey, you know, this, this is, it looks like the cost on this is running way over. And, and don't, don't wait, don't like, like you said, don't wait till we get seventy five percent with the, with the plans and then, oh, you know, we, we, we don't have any money or we're running over budget. Don't do that. Tell us early, we'll scale back the project somehow. And we, and you're a partner in it. You, you gotta help us work towards that goal.
Right, right, Councilman, I appreciate the, those words. CPH really does look at us as a trusted advisor to you. We want to protect your investment and make sure you're getting the value you want. And so, I will, and my team will be committed to that, to that goal.
Thank you.
And, and I want to add, that was the same thing, I was, with just what you said. You guys came here ready to work, already looking at, at ideas. And I, that's, you know, obviously, that's what swayed me too. And when you continue on with that, and we, we did discuss a little bit too, so like, you're working with staff, and the staff has to realize, there's things you may dream of for out there, but are they really practical? Are they really necessary? So, I, I think the city manager is right, we're gonna have to really, you know, and it can't, we can't just like, it has to be like a virtually, we, once we start this, we need to be on top of it every step of the way. Not like we don't look at it for two or three weeks or whatever, it needs to be continual. And, and one other thing, so, we talked about the, and you brought it up, Councilman Spina, about the, the two options. And you're saying the stakeholders, now, who, who will that be exactly? I mean, is it input from us? Because I think most of us felt like the one option was really a good, good way of going.
Well, I think it's, I think staff has got to look at it and how the.
Right, and see how it'll work out too.
Impacts the, the different departments and the access to the yard and, and how that all fits together. So, I think they need to bring a recommendation to us, and they need to clarify it, you know, amongst the departments and the people that are out there.
Lots of persons, a lot more people at, or at city hall, for example.
Right.
The question would be, you know, could we have a workshop for me? That would be helpful, just saying.
And I kind of wonder if one option isn't gonna be more cost-effective than the other two. So, I mean, that's another consideration, right, in, in that in itself. Because I agree with Councilman Smith, this is a huge number, huge number.
Well, you know, next week, we're doing a budget workshop. And I think that part of that workshop, we need to start talking about the capital improvement plan and put it out for five, ten, and twenty years, so that we know what other projects are out there in all funds.
Any, do they have anything else? And thank you for coming up and explaining what you, and I do like the fact that you have that kind of like third-party system, so everybody's looking at the costs, not just you guys, not just the CM, our, but somebody else too, so, and, and us. So, that's gonna be helpful. So, you're looking for a motion on this?
We would look for an approval or some type of motion, yes.
Mr. President, I move approval of this item, and again, just keep us informed, keep us totally on top of everything on this cost.
Second.
Just, if, if it would be advantageous or desirous, we, CPH would be happy to present each critical milestone to the council to see where we are and check in with you.
We'd love that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second for approval of business item four point one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passed unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. City attorney's report, city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Business item five point one is a first reading of ordinance number one four seven nine dash two four. Ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, establishing a new twelve-month moratorium on the consideration of new residential applications for annexations, land use modifications, rezonies, major planned unit development amendments, conditional uses or variances for property over one acre, providing for conflicts, exemption severability, expiration, and an effective date. Essentially, this is establishing a new moratorium for twelve months at the expiration of the one we have now, due to the fact that the water use permit is still in the process of the application, still in the process of being reviewed income by Southwest Florida Water Management District. We have not had a resolution to the issues that were brought in the ordinance approximately a year ago.
Is there a discussion?
We approve of. Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the residential moratorium for a non-twelve-month extension.
Mr. President, can, can we just talk?
Yes, yeah, that's what I said.
A little discussion, yeah. What's, I mean, how long before we get an answer on the Swift Mud?
So, we received, I don't know, second response, from, third response from Swift Mud about three weeks ago. We met with Jones Edmonds. There was two questions. One, question one was asking us, we currently have one EMP, Environmental Management Plan, basically where we monitor the levels of a body of water. They are asking us to add an additional, it's either four or five sites to, to monitor. So, we're trying to, a couple of things, respond with why we, we don't, we feel we don't need to monitor five different locations. But we're also trying to find five locations and get agreements to be able to monitor those bodies of water. Agreement number two, or, excuse me, question number two, had to deal with the agreement with the Evans-Orisces properties. If you remember, Clark Hobby had come in, talked to us about development, about nine hundred acres north from Otis Allen, north to about ninety-eight. Those properties have wells on them that have a capacity, a permitted capacity from Swift Mud for seven hundred ninety thousand gallons. And we had an agreement where we would service that subdivision with water in exchange for them giving us the capacity of those wells. We submitted Swift Mud that agreement, and they now are asking us for a phasing plan, a development plan. Basically, they weren't happy with the agreement that we had, and they wanted more specification, or more detail to it. The problem is, is there's not more detail to give at this moment. So, we're trying to work through that. We're working with Clark Hobby and his team to come up with a response for question number two. We feel that if we can answer those two questions, we should receive our permit for the four point four eight million gallons. There's no guarantee, I mean, we did go from, I think it was thirteen questions, down to two. But those two questions are new, kind of the, the rules of the game changed a little bit on us. Yeah, exactly. So, as a staff, with our consultant, we're working on getting that response. I would hope that we're able to, we have ninety days from the time that we received it to respond back. So, we will respond back within those ninety days. And then, once we respond, Swift Mud has thirty days to respond back to us. So, potentially, it could be another hundred and twenty days if everything goes right and Swift Mud gives us approval. Or it could be hundred and twenty days plus with response times.
Right, and, and we know every time they come back with another set of questions, it triggers another set of time periods. Do we have the, the right people, given the right response, is my question? Because I know a lot of times, if you get the right person to answer the question, you get a good answer. If you understand what I'm saying.
I do. I, I, I think we do. We have the team, we've also reached out to Doug Manson, who is the water guru for the state. So, he is willing to help us through the Evans-Orisce group, and I won't go into that whole relationship there. But I, I think we have the right people in place. Our plan is that before we respond, formally respond, we will have an informal meeting, or I guess it'll be a formal meeting with Swift Mud, like a pre, pre-submital meeting, try to work through all the answers or questions to our answers before we submit. So, if we have to make a modification, we can.
Can we hire the, the guru to sit in that meeting and help us craft a response to this?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's what we're trying to do. He's, he is working with us on question number two specifically, which is the agreement with the Evans-Orisces. But my understanding is that he can help us with question one as well.
Right, I mean, if he, if he could help us with questions prior, that would be good too.
Right.
Any, any help he can get. And, and I just, I mean, I, I would, personally, I would rather us hire him than use him through Clark.
Right, I agree with that.
That way, that way.
It's our money.
It's, yeah, yeah. So, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, we've been very careful with how that relationship works.
Correct.
Mr. President? I'm glad you brought that up, because I was hesitant to second. But I always have an issue with all the money that we spend on consultants. And do you truly feel that the consultants that we're using on this project are doing their due diligence to do what they need to do for us? Because we pay them a lot of money, and I don't always feel that we get our money's worth. And this has kind of dragged on and dragged on. It's not your fault. But do you feel the consultants are doing what they need to do?
I do, on, on this situation, I do. You know, I've, I've reviewed the responses, I'm not telling you, I understand every response, because a lot of it is over my head. But I've reviewed the responses, and Swift Mud comes back with more. I've sat in the meetings, the pre-application meeting that we had nearly a year ago, understood what the rules of the game were and where we needed to get to. And I feel like the rules have changed on us a couple of times. And so, we pivot and adjust and respond. So, short answer is, I do believe that our consultants are, are doing what they need to do for us on this project.
Well, just, just to add to what he's talking about there, though, so, the CPH guy just left here and said that they'd be willing to come to our meetings and update us at our meetings. And Jones Edmund, until they heard we were irritated and showed up at the next meeting, we never hear anything from them. We don't know what's going on, we don't have any idea. Now, you guys may know, obviously, know more, but for us to make decisions, and we don't hear anything till five, six months go by and stuff, I mean, as much as they, like you said, as much we're paying them, they should be here at every meeting. Amber from Swift Mud, she had to leave, but, I mean, she's, she's not even involved with half the stuff, and she's here all the time listening in and stuff.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't see why they're not here.
We can ask them to be here.
This is an ongoing, ongoing thing, that's, you know, and, and Councilman Smith, thanks for bringing up some discussion. And, and I know waters are, are, are main focus that we're talking about. But we still, you know, we're still transportation, we're, we're working through the hotspots things. We still have public safety with the, the amount of officers. You're talking about some property, would you say nine hundred acres?
Right.
I mean, that's gonna bring us right back to, you know, where we are, so, I mean.
Well, there's, there's a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
On the nine hundred acres, that's a whole nother conversation, if, if it gets annexed in or, or that, so that's not.
Right, but I mean, that's the things, during this moratorium, these are the things we need to be looking at.
Right.
What, nine hundred acres?
The Evans and Orisce, they haven't, where the wells are, the seven hundred ninety thousand gallons, that they're associated with nine hundred acres.
Right, well, let me ask a follow-up question then. You know, I, I don't want to disagree, but I don't think that a consultant should be here at every meeting to report to council. They're supposed to be working with the staff, and then the staff reports to us. In a case like this, when we were not happy with the, the length of delay and, and on that timeline, when we saw it, we needed to have them here. But I don't know that we want every consultant here every time to report to us on a project. We'll, we'll be getting bogged down. And I really think that they need to be doing that. But I have a question for the city manager. Once we get these two questions resolved, and, and they go ahead and say, okay, we can give you this permit, what do we do then? Because we can't really lift the moratorium then, because that's only for what we have in the pipeline.
Correct, that's, that's what we have in the pipeline. And, and that's, we have to, and the conversations have, have started, is what do we do next? Where, where's our next allotment of water coming from? We've had conversations with surrounding property owners with their wells, you know, that have existing wells with capacity. You know, is it, we connect and purchase from another entity? You know, do we do, you had, we had the gentleman from the Dade City Business Center that was here trying to promote that he has water that we could connect to, is it that we go to deep injection wells? Those are all things that we have to look at. The issue with Swift Mud, and we, we're starting to look at it, but we can't show that we can pump additional waters, water out of the ground, or have these agreements in place with the other entities, because then it affects the, the, the current request we have in. Because Swift Mud looks at it as water banking. So, if we were able to show Swift Mud that we, we can, let's say, hook to Dade City and get five hundred thousand gallons a day from them, then they're gonna say, well, why do you need, why are you asking for four point four eight? Just ask for four, because you already have five from Dade City. So, it's a, it's a, a fine line we walk between getting our current permit in place and then expanding beyond that. And so, we're having those conversations with Jones Edmunds currently, or we had them with them. But the focus has been getting the current permit increased. And then, we can focus solely on increase, additional water sources from that point.
And, and I just want to say, you're right on that, we don't, we don't, they should be working with staff, and we don't need them here at every single meeting. You know, I'm just going, this is kind of like an ultra-important thing we've been discussing for a long time now. And I think when we ask staff at a meeting, they can only tell us what they were told. And I, I do think it's important to hear from them on, on some occasions, you know, along, along the way, especially on, on this particular issue. Now, if they're looking at something at the wastewater treatment, we don't need to hear every little thing they do, but, and you're right, because that would just bog us down. But I mean, I think in this particular issue, I mean, a little bit more communication would be helpful for us, because, you know, I, I think back to the, a long time ago, to the fire station, when we had, well, so we had all these cost overruns, and we didn't, it just was thrown upon us all at once, and it's like, nah. We don't, we don't want that stuff happening, so, anyways.
Well, and, you, you know, the, the other thing too is, if we've got a hundred and twenty days to make, give a response, there's nothing that says we can't do it in two weeks.
That's right. Let's not make it take. That's right. Let's not make it take that.
You, you understand what I'm saying? Don't take a hundred and twenty darn days.
Right.
And if I could just, if I could just state, being that, that consultant on occasion in my, in my real life job, in my day job, when the, when the governing entity, I mean, I, there's, there are very few people who can do this kind of work. There, there's a handful of engineers in the state who can handle this kind of work. The thing is, is that, and it's very meticulous in how they do the, you know, water forecasting and the, and the models and everything. But Charlie, if you, I mean, Councilman Proctor, you know, if the government entity is changing the questions, they're moving the cheese.
Oh, yeah, I get that.
You, you know, I can't fix that as somebody who's just an architect working on a specific project. So that's what I think we have to recognize. If we can get those last two questions answered to the best of our ability and have somebody else in the background going, yeah, that looks right, then I think that's a good approach.
And I think you need the person pushing at the meeting, SWIFTMUD, that knows more than them about the water.
That's right.
That, that can say, that's not, what you're saying's not right. They don't have to have that, you know? You need that, that person that, that they kind of fear, that he's, that this water expert. And from everything I understand, this is the guy you want pushing your, pushing your permit. But one thing I will say is, Councilman Spina, you're right. We're just going to be treading water once we get the permit, right? We just, so everything entitled, everything we have entitled is going to be covered in that permit. So where are we at?
I think what Billy's saying is that we, we have to get that done before we can start looking at all these other things.
Sure.
Because then it kind of tips our hand, but whatever.
Yeah, I, I think we got to start looking, and I'm sure you are looking at everything anyway. And I know at one time, there was talk of creating a little water alliance.
Pascua Water.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that prob-, I, I think Dade City will be, would be willing to look at dusting that off too.
So I will quickly go, because we may have some AV issues. Our team meetings is only till eight o'clock tonight, and we have the workshop. We thought we had it planned out, right. But Dade City, we've had conversations with them. I've had conversations with their, with their engineer, and they're in the same boat we are at the moment. They're, they're going through the same process, and they don't have water, because we have an interconnect line. You know, honestly, that's the easy solution if Dade City can provide us water, because we already have the line between the two cities. So we're really going to focus on that. We have to get, they have to get where they need to be. We'll get where we need to be. And then I think, you know, but we'll see if timing works out on that.
About the transmission system, any will-
Correct.
-there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we, and so we, we, we understand that we want to keep the spark, we want to keep it going. So, we do have a motion and a second on this ordinance number one four seven nine dash two four on the first reading. If there's no other further discussion, I will ask for a vote and signify aye if you are in approvals by signifying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Citizen comments. Ms. Hillman, has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
Anybody care to speak? All right. Moving along, the city manager ran away, so we're going to skip him for a second. But before we get to the comments, I will just ask that everybody kind of keep their comments to quick because of what he just explained to us about the, the next meeting. So I'll go to the mayor announcements right now.
I'll just be real fast. I just wanted to thank the chief and his staff for honoring Chief Howell and helping him to be laid to rest in a very honorable and respectful way. And I was very proud of, of your team. So thank you. Appreciate it. And then we have scholarship night on the twenty-first for Zephyr Hills High School. So if anybody wants to come, it's-
Of May.
Of May. That's all I have.
Okay. City manager?
Uh, just quickly, zero four hundred, four o'clock tomorrow morning. Consolidation goes live. So, nine one one calls, all will be going to Pasco County. So that will be occurring tomorrow, four o'clock in the morning. Reminder, workshop next Monday, five twenty. That's the date at, I believe, six PM, five thirty? Thank you.
Five thirty.
Five twenty, five thirty. And then also, I had sent you an email. The city, Pasco County, Baduco, received the CC award, the corporate investment and community impact for Baduco, choosing Zephyr Hills to build their, their production plans. And then also, so scholarship night, May twenty-first, you said. May twenty-third is the Parks and Master Plan, what am I got here? Community meeting, here, this thing. May twenty-third, five thirty to seven, community open house for Parks Master Plan. That's all I have.
Uh, city attorney?
No announcements.
Well, city council, we'll start with Councilman Spina.
No announcements.
Councilman Proctor, Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Nothing from either.
And me neither. I'm just going to ask real quick, like, does anybody need like a, a one minute in between? Or if I adjourn this meeting, can we go right into the next meeting?
I would like to use the restroom.
Okay, so we will adjourn for as quick as possible. Meeting adjourned.
Oh, I understand-